Good timing. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a study session with the Prescott City Council. Today's Tuesday, February 27, 2018. Let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Here.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Scholl.
Here.
Councilman Sishka.
Here.
All are present.
All right, thank you. We have two presentations and we'll start with the Prescott area Young Professionals Advisory Committee.
All right, how are you guys doing today?
Good.
Great.
So I'm going to apologize in advance. I was just working with a 99-year-old WWII vet and he's very, very hard of hearing, so I've been yelling for an hour. So if I start to yell, just give me a signal.
It'll be good.
It'll be good. All right. Well, my name's Megan. I'm with the Prescott area Young Professionals Advisory Committee. Today, I'd like to tell you a little bit about who we are or what we are. But we've got to start with telling you, I'm on the board of Prescott area Young Professionals, which is a local networking group that's made up of professionals aged 21 to 40. And we provide opportunities for professional and personal development in addition to promoting general economic development for Prescott area businesses. So we have opportunities to get involved, volunteer, kind of make a difference in the community, and participate in making Prescott a better place to work, live, and play. So how did the advisory committee come about? What is our plan? So Prescott area Young Professionals, P-A-Y-P, we organized a lunch and learn with city council member Greg Mazel and Mayor Harry Oberg back in 2017, the springtime. And we received feedback that P-A-Y-P would be a great resource to provide communication between our generation and city officials in the different areas that concern our community. So we put together a selection committee that involved community members, city council members, P-A-Y-P board members, and some city officials to review applications, and here we are with the young advisory committee.
Nice.
Some folks back here today. So our goal was really to share different viewpoints and, as our city makes plans for the future, and share our perspectives that affect the young professionals in our community and see if we could help come up with solutions, brainstorm ideas, and just be a support for the current city officials. So that group includes a very diverse background. We have President Megan McAnally. She is co-owner of Terra Soul Outdoor Designs and West Alley Boutique. And then Vice President Phil Stevens, back here somewhere. He is owner of Ability Remodeling. We've got Josh Bowen, technology consultant. Arianna Bennett is our media executive. Then Luther Kraxberger, who's in real estate and development. And then Tyler Goodman, which you guys know. He's on the AAs on with the city.
Yes.
Over here. And then myself. I'm Megan. I'm a speech pathologist in the area. So today, I'm going to turn it over to Luther, who will be talking to you about certain programs and ideas on how we can communicate better with our community.
Hi, my name's Luther. I'm a real estate agent here in town. And we're grateful for the opportunity to recommend some of the options that we've come up with for the city to more effectively communicate with the community on emergencies and other events going on. As young professionals, we're excited about the new website that you guys have created and some of the great improvements that it has. It's easier to navigate and find answers to questions. The aesthetics of the new calendar make it easier to find events and know what's going on. We're in an age of social media, and as young professionals, we're aware of how influential social media is for mass marketing. We would like to propose a couple of programs that we would think would help the city in communicating and utilizing social media. Currently, on the city's Facebook page, there are a few articles on what city partners are doing, but not a lot of information on the city of Prescott events specifically. To be completely honest, sometimes there's events going on downtown and I don't even know what they are, if there are events. So it's kind of confusing in that regard. These are great events and great revenue drivers for the city and good for growth and future development for the city. It'd be beneficial to have them in an easily marketed-to-the-masses platform such as social media. We know that social media can be the most cost-effective way to get information out to the masses, and it also is a really fast way to get through social networks. By using social media management software such as HootSuite, which I'll go into later, the city can drive effective citizen engagement through social media, increase awareness and public participation from everything from local events to national programs. It can be challenging when working with multiple agencies and partners like community centers, city libraries, elected officials, public policies, and police departments. Without the right foundation and integrated strategy, it becomes hard to maintain a unified voice, and we understand that. Effective social media management can stop these issues of bad information, privately-created websites that have false information or scattered or regularly-maintained information. HootSuite's a way to connect your social media profiles, to publish and schedule content, which means that you can create a post and post it across not only Facebook, but Instagram and Twitter and all these other social media sites. Statistics show that older adults primarily use Facebook, but younger demographics use multiple social media programs regularly and have accounts not only on Facebook, but also Twitter, Snapchat, and Instagram. So by utilizing HootSuite, you're able to cover multiple social media platforms and not leave behind a potential audience. In terms of security, the city can stay compliant with Freedom of Information Act and other public record laws by using the social media archiving integrations that come with these management systems. In addition, the software can measure public sentiment around your programs and policies with real-time social media listening analytics, as well as built-in public polling feedback system. So the city can respond quickly to assigning posts and messages to the right team member, department, or agency for efficient follow-up. It can also cut the risk of staff error while working across departments with secure logins, publishing approvals, and flexible permission levels. HootSuite, the company that we looked into, is capable of working with the city to create a specific plan to meet our specific needs. Another communication aspect that we looked into was the emergency push notifications, such as Amber Alerts that you guys get. If an emergency is happening within the Quad City area, local residents have difficulty finding accurate emergency information when using different social media platforms that are not updated or maintained regularly by the city. So there can be bad information updated on private sites and given inaccurate information, really confuse the situation. By using Emergency Alert System that broadcasts on multiple platforms such as text and push notifications, you're better able to accurately and effectively update the residents. Integrated Public Alert Warning System is a free software available to the city that can provide this service. Currently, many cities of the same size as Prescott are successfully using the software. Also, HootSuite integrates with the emergency management system as well, so you can help promote other credible municipality services or departments of the government, for example, promoting sites such as ADOT or YCSO or US Forest Service. Ultimately, trying to integrate all these systems for broad, simple communication from the city was a goal of our research. Thank you for your time. We look forward to the city's future technological advancements, and we're also open to suggestions from the council and the mayor for any topics that the council thinks it would be important for this group to look into and present our findings at a later meeting. If you have any questions, we'd be open to that right now.
Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is that HootSuite or TootSuite?
HootSuite, sorry. Hoot, like an owl.
Yes.
H-O-O-T. Mayor, I have a question. Luther, you briefly mentioned that you'd seen our new website. When we initiated the city business license a year ago in January, part of the expectation of our business community was that our businesses could be listed there, they could be reviewed. People looking to start up businesses, expand businesses, investigating our business environment could access our website. Could you comment on your initial impressions of that and what you like about it, what you'd like to see improved?
Yeah, I'm going to give all those questions to Josh. He's our tech guy, so I'll let him answer that for you.
Looking at the new website, we found there, it's very easy to access such information. The menus are laid out very well. The only thing is that people might have trouble just navigating websites in general. I teach classes at the PV library, and some people, even though it's very laid out, it's laid out well, they have trouble understanding what a drop-down menu is, so.
And you'd probably like to keep the number of clicks down to two or three before you find the information you're looking for, right?
Exactly. And the search function worked well, is in addition.
So initial impressions are pretty positive and
Yes.
We can refine it, right?
And it works very well on mobile devices.
Oh, good. Thank you. Yeah, good.
Yeah, go ahead. So I'm assuming that with Josh's presentation, that we're not doing this stuff right now?
Correct.
Okay. And so, Michael, my question is, why aren't we doing this stuff right now?
Well, I think it's, you know, once you put something out there and you get cross demographics of ways to communicate, especially with social media, you're getting feedback from a demographic we don't have that many employees in, to be quite honest. And ideas like HootSuite that send out the same message on multiple social media platforms is a good idea, but until you actually put it out there and let people see what they're used to, I don't know that, and in some ways, I would defend staff not knowing that this would be something that would be interesting to this demographic. Now we know it's something we could try to implement.
Okay, well, I appreciate the answer. Thank you. So what do you think we ought to do?
We suggest that you look into using HootSuite and talking with the people responsible for city communications if it's something that would work for them.
Good.
So I have one more question, Mayor. So what all this leads me to deduct is that you feel like your demographic is not being communicated with?
That we are not being communicated with on the channels that we check regularly.
Okay. Missed opportunity.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely.
Question, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
To you, I guess, or to Michael. So if that's something that we want to get involved with, how does that function occur? Do we have RIT?
Yeah, it's
With HootSuite? Do we have
It's probably a combination of RIT people and our community outreach people creating the ability through HootSuite or something like it to put our postings or our messaging on multiple platforms. From a technical perspective, it'd be the IT department, but in terms of messaging, it'd be the community outreach department. And none of it's that difficult. It's just a matter of getting arms around it and doing it.
Well, and I would say, we are on Facebook, and I think, Luther, you mentioned that. So it's not that we're not on social media at all, we're just not maximizing the opportunity?
And we're old.
Yeah.
Speak for yourself.
They said it nicely, but I mean, you know, I'm the youngest, and look at me, so Sorry, Alexa.
I'm not even old enough to be in
I know you're not. Alexa Company notwithstanding, we're old. But we need to, and I think that's a good value of having this young leadership group, is these are things we wouldn't have come up with on our own, but you guys looking at it and finding out ways we can communicate our message better with you is great, so.
Well, we could leverage Mr. Goodman in our office to help us with this, so. Councilwoman Scholl, please.
Well, thank you so much. I can tell you guys have put a lot of hard work into this. Something I'd like to see you guys explore a little bit more is there's a difference between posting information on social media and posting information that's engaging. So what type of information? Should there be graphic images? Should we be posting videos? What type of stuff should we be posting that will get the most engagement? And, you know, so that we can maximize our opportunity instead of just posting a little blurb that no one's really going to read? So just information on what we can do to make our posts and our social media more engaging.
That's definitely something we can look into. The number-one thing we've found so far is events. That's what people want the most.
Yeah, so just information about what's going on. Mayor Protem Orr.
Thank you. I want to thank the P-A-Y-P for being here. I will tell you, the events, Luther, Josh, that is something we've tried to get our arms around for a long time. And it's very difficult because there are many different groups doing different events, but we are focused on that with the Chamber and PDP, and hopefully, we can do more of that and do a better job with it, so thank you for mentioning that. I also like the alert system that you're suggesting that we do. I know I just went on, yesterday, went online and signed up for Red Alert, which is through, it's a national YAVAPI sheriff, and I know they're going to test tomorrow or something. I should get something, so we need to make sure we're plugged into that. And I think probably our police and fire are, but I'd like to make sure that happens, so. And I also look forward to the day that I, out there, and I'm looking up here and I see you, all of you. So thank you for coming today and standing up for Prescott. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? All right. Do you guys have more with your presentation? Is that
No, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. Thanks for being here.
Thank you very much.
All right, next, we have Chris Bridges with Simpo.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Thank you very much for having me. I'm going to stay on the side, so folks in the back, they're not staring at my backside and they can see the projection, so. Thank you for inviting me to be here. We're just going to review kind of where we're at with Simpo and our regional transportation planning process and just get you up to date on what we're doing. So with that, we'll jump right in. So we are required, as a metropolitan planning organization, to conduct regional transportation planning. We do have to do that at a minimum every five years. We are in the process right now of budgeting for and planning for doing our next update to this plan, starting in probably January is when we're going to advertise for this. It does take into account a variety of issues: land use, traffic patterns, traffic counts, population, anything socio-economic related that we can get our hands on, we definitely include in here. The purpose is to basically make sure we are investing our money into our infrastructure and our roadway network and transportation, whatever that may be, effectively. We're not putting it in the wrong place, and we're building the things that are going to better suit our residents. This is a basic process of what you do when you're doing these things, and it's typically the same every time that we run through. It's, you know, you're reviewing your data, we pull in all the land use information, we involve your land use planners, we involve your economic developers. Then we take all of this information, we put it into a transportation model of some sort. This last go-around that we just completed, it was adopted by the Simpo Board in 2015. We partnered with ADOT. ADOT actually did all of our traffic modeling for us because they had a big gap in our traffic patterns. The attractors that they had in their model were not jiving with where the traffic was actually going. So it really benefited both ADOT and us to partner together on that project, and now their traffic model is solid and actually reflects what's happening in the region. Essentially, we take all of those things, put them in there, sort them all out, have public meetings, deal with developers, you name it. And at the end, we come up with alternatives and recommendations for future projects. And again, it is a planning document, so it's not holding you to a, well, this is what you said, it's number one, and now you have to do that, and you can't do two until you do one. It's, we adjust, we plan accordingly, depending upon what happens with growth patterns, types of development. You might get a big commercial development that nobody had thought of before coming in. So just in general, this is our study area. Our planning boundary is a little bit smaller than that. Our planning boundary essentially covers Prescott, Prescott Valley, Dewey-Humboldt, Chino Valley, up to Paulden, some of Williamson Valley, and then the county areas in between. But our study area actually went all the way out to I-17, so that, because I-17 is so important to our region's connectivity to commerce and anything related to travel out of an airport, if you're going to Sky Harbor, produce, groceries, gasoline, you name it, is all coming up I-17. So we wanted to make sure we were capturing the needs out in that area. I mentioned population. The 2040 plan, which is the one that we're working under right now, the next plan will probably be the 2050 plan. I hope I'm around for the 2050 plan to be realized. But population for our 2040 plan showed our existing population in the Simpo area at 122,715, and yes, I have that memorized. The projection for 2040 was somewhere around 215,000. That continues to adjust. The plan before was significantly higher because we were in the middle of a massive boom when we were finishing our first regional plan, and that one actually showed us at 400,000 in the year 2030. So there's a reason why you do these things every five years, to make sure you're staying on top and you're actually having good, reasonable projections. I mentioned employment, and the biggest one that you'll see, and I know the laser marks it's not so good, but if you look at the airport area, which is right smack in the middle, the laser's not doing it. So right in the middle of the area there on the left was the existing 2040 on the right. Is the mouse work? Yeah, that's perfect. Thank you. So right here's the airport, projected 2040 on the left is what was existing. As you can see, yeah, there's a decent amount of employment happening in the airport area, but with the advent of the Deepwell Ranch subdivision, with all their commercial coming in there, also incorporated a potential hospital site north of the airport along the highway, and the anticipated increase in economic development opportunities around the airport, that that went up significantly in our plan. So the other part of it is what's actually happening on the ground and what you all are planning in your general plans. So we take, in this part, I just captured the Prescott area as far as general land use goes, but you can see that on the left map here, we've included all of the Depot Ranch area, we've got all the Granite Dells information, and then even actually, it goes all the way into Prescott Valley where we're including their potential new subdivisions as well, their new commercial developments. All of that goes into something that's called a traffic analysis zone. So each of one of these little areas here gets populated with the type of activity, whether it's residential, high-density, low-density, commercial, whether it's big box or, you know, some sort of small level of commercial activity, and goes into each one of these little areas. And where the arrow is here on the right, you can see, sort of, kind of, this is Pioneer Parkway going left to right. This is Highway 89. Airport's on the right. And these two little roads here, one's Willow Creek as it is today, and the other one is the proposed new Depot Ranch Road, and then as well as some other opportunities around the airport. So in the way the model works is each of those attractors in that zone generate traffic to it. So the predominantly large number of traffic attractors end up being a commercial activity, which is why you see on State Route 69, why are there so many cars on 69? You could go a different route. Well, they're trying to get to those businesses to buy things or to sell, buy a service, or sell something, or deliver something. So at some point in time, it doesn't really matter, you know, we could talk about a whole nother road south of 69 or doing another one to the north, but the businesses are located on 69 and those draw the traffic. So that's why you end up seeing things like Well, I just want to zoom in here so you could see that the Deepwell development specifically in there, but also including things north of the airport, especially considering there's a potential for a new hospital campus up there. That was a big attractor for this area, and it's what's driving a lot of what was proposed on 89 and 89A. And right now, today, 89A, around 89, is growing at 7% traffic every single year. We're approaching 40,000 cars a day on 89A, and State Route 69 is not getting any lower. It's staying about the same or growing slightly, but the 89A corridor has definitely become the way for people to get back and forth between Prescott and Prescott Valley without having to go through, what did I say this morning, 28 stoplights? There's only a couple, right? So the patterns really drive, the land use patterns really drive where that traffic's going. So the short-term recommendations that came out of our study were to look at the 89A, 89 traffic interchange. And that's no surprise, especially with the Depot Ranch development and potentially a hospital north of the airport, that that interchange is a very standard, what's called a diamond traffic interchange or Diamond TI. That's basically the lowest-level, entry-level traffic interchange you have. It's clear that something has to be done different at that intersection here in the future. And depending upon the rate of development that happens in that area or commercial activity, that that could be needed much sooner than we thought. So going down the list here, the other one was 69 and 169 intersection. I don't know how frequently you all travel through there, but the left-turning movement off of 69 onto 169, you could have 20, 30 cars queued up there trying to make a left-hand turn, and they can't get through in one cycle. So we're looking at potentially doing dual lefts there as a project. And then the southbound 89 to eastbound 89A, there's a single on-ramp. There are dual lefts under the bridge. And then the right lane goes to Larry Caldwell, and then it becomes a race or a battle because people aren't necessarily kind to each other in vehicles to get over. Or you're getting stuck going to Larry Caldwell, and then you gotta hit the stop sign and then go down the other ramp. So the majority of people line up in that left lane and don't even use the dual left. So we've got a capacity potential under the bridge, but nobody's using it because they can't get onto the highway that they're trying to get to. So just adding a dual on-ramp would be a significant change to the operations of that traffic interchange. But ultimately, you might be looking at some other form of it. You see all different types of traffic interchanges in the Phoenix area. One's called a, it's my favorite, it's called a spooey. It's a single-point urban interchange. It can actually move traffic significantly better. Would it fit in that area? I don't know. There's all kinds of options for diverging diamonds and you name it. I can get into technicalities of it for an hour, and you would still say, Chris, what the heck are you talking about? So I just want to talk about some of the recommendations that came out of the study in general. State Route 69 widening to six lanes. This has been in every plan that's happened since before even Simpo was around, is widening the entire distance from Prescott through Prescott Valley, all the way out to Dewey-Humboldt and if not further. The Robert Road traffic interchange, which right now on that portion of Fane Road in 89A is a traffic light. It should not be a traffic light in the middle of a road that's federally functionally classified as a freeway. Glassford Hill Road, the north side, you know, the town has done some widening in the middle part of the town and south, but going to the north with, especially with the Jasper development, the continued expansion of Granville, there needs to be additional capacity on Glassford, and the intersection at Glassford Hill in 89A also needs to have some sort of improvements. We're in the tail end of doing an 89A corridor study, and the overwhelming recommendations are you need to do something about Glassford Hill, the traffic interchange, because in the mornings, it's awful. It backs up from 89A all the way back to the Granville traffic light, which is almost, it's about 3/4 of a mile away, perhaps. And then there's a whole list on here, but the one I wanted to point out specifically that's probably of most interest to you all here in the city is the widening of State Route 89 to six lanes. Now, we're getting ready to start the construction of the widening of 89 in front of the airport and the golf course this spring, and that's going to four lanes. But the reality is, is you really need six lanes. And there's other issues that play into this. One is funding is always the number-one restrictor, but two, there's right-of-way issues in there. The golf course was originally built with federal funds, so it's a 4F property, which makes it very difficult to get right-of-way out of a 4F property because it was built with federal dollars for recreational purposes. The other one is the Circle K is right there. And their pumps are 12 feet from the right-of-way. With, once the widening's done, it's right there. So now you're talking about, is that going to impact Circle K? Is it going to impact the golf course? What does it mean for the homes that are right there? So there are some challenges engineering-wise of getting through that little choke point that have to be addressed, so. Yeah, I can take questions if you'd like.
With the roundabout right there at Fippen and that road extension all the way out to 89A, have you done a study on how much that's going to, how much traffic that's going to take off of 89, 89A interchange?
You're talking about coming from the Fippen roundabout and being able to stay off of 89A?
Yeah.
And go east? So it's right there, it's letter M? Yeah. So that actually does quite a bit. It helps a lot. It keeps people out of that single point, right, that everybody's funneling to, and it's right in the middle. it's right in the middle of all of our communities and has a lot of traffic in it. So, if you can keep people out of that interchange, then you don't have to improve the interchange as much, or as soon. Granted, you have to build a very long bridge to get across Granite Creek to get over to the other side, but it does help significantly.
Thank you.
And then, our very large, long-term is to eventually have an access control facility that would come from I-17, connect up into the 89A corridor, and then have another one that comes out, basically where the Prescott Valley water tanks are on 89A, that goes north around the east side of Chino Valley, so you could move freight or whatever, just passing through, much easier, just like 89A functions today, but have a larger connectivity. And, you know, having a person in my household who happens to do economic development, that she always calls me and says, hey, I got a call from a business, and they want to know, when are we getting a freeway? I said, well, we have one, it just doesn't connect to another freeway via another freeway.
Is that the extension of Great Western?
So, with that, there's my contact information. I know you all have it, but for folks in the audience, if you do have questions, you know, we are, I'm always available, email, phone, to try to help out our public. So, with that, I'll happy to open up to any questions you may have.
Yeah, thanks so much for being here today, Chris. Appreciate it. We'll go to questions and comments. Councilman Good?
Yeah, Chris, we spoke recently about this, and previously serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and looking at the plans for the Deepwell Ranch, and of course, we have additional large developments coming forward here pretty soon. Having a reliable traffic study to reference is extremely important when we're making decisions about right-of-way and developers seeding that in anticipation of these increased traffic volumes. I know we had a ADOT open house at Prescott Valley, I guess it was a little over maybe six or eight months ago, something like that, and they had some of these proposals in their drawings and presentations. But, the bottom line was, there was no funding. There was no funding anticipated or scheduled to even do these modest things, such as you're adding the extra-left turn lane on the eastbound access ramp, and expanding that from two lanes that are kind of really a one lane, and making that, I mean, that's a modest change, and even that hasn't been funded. So, how can we possibly do good planning when we don't have the funding or ability to project these types of larger interchanges that we're gonna need to be able to move traffic?
Well, I would say, I think we've done really good planning. Where we're gonna fall short is the implementing of these projects. And you're spot-on. The ADOT State Transportation Board, just at their last meeting, approved the long-range plan, which eliminates all expansion funding for projects on the state system until we have more revenue. They're funneling all their funds into either maintenance or safety improvements, modernization, which could be, you know, a technology advancement to try to monitor traffic and try to make traffic lights maybe function better, but as far as these big, like a Robert Road traffic interchange, is not happening. We've historically taken our very small amount of MPO federal dollars and leveraged those into large projects. Since the inception of the MPO, we've received somewhere around 12 to 13 million dollars of federal MPO dollars, and we've turned that into 115 million dollars' worth of construction. But, that's because there was 115 million dollars of money that was out there. That's going away. So, we're gonna have to be creative in the near term until we find some sort of solution from the state, the feds, or locally, that's going to increase our transportation revenue. And without that, I can take our $600,000, and I can go to ADOT and say, hey, I got $600,000, can we build a new traffic interchange? And they'll say, here, I'll give you $0, and you can have it every day, all day, because it's nothing. And, so, the reality is, is we either need to take care of ourselves, or we need the state to take care of it for us.
Well, that's the problem, when you have planning without the ability to execute, it's an exercise in futility, really.
It's rather frustrating.
Have you looked, or are there any expectations from the Trump administration's focus on building infrastructure?
So, I've read through the president's proposal, and quite honestly, it's backwards. Right now, when you get federal dollars, it's 80% federal and 20% match. And in fact, Arizona, we're way better off than most states because we have so much federal land, our match is actually 5.7%. So, the proposal is to flip-flop it and have 20% federal and 80% local and state. We don't have that either. And when you federalize a project, you're probably looking at a 30% increase at a minimum. So, you're actually gonna end up costing yourself more money to take that federal money, you might as well just build it yourself. So, I'm not sure where that's gonna end up by the time it works through Congress, and maybe that goes away, or maybe it changes entirely, but, you know, the proposal I've seen isn't real promising for us locally.
The last question is on your population projections. What percentage per year did you utilize to go from 122,000 to 215,000 between now and 2040?
Okay, now you're getting into math, and I'm a planner. It was somewhere around 2.5 to 3, I believe. Historically, we've actually grown much larger than that. We've been more around 5.
Yeah, that's a concern of mine as well. Some of the projections, I think, are not realistic considering the accelerating growth we're experiencing.
Right, and as I referenced, the first plan we did had an extremely high growth rate because that's what we were experiencing, and the housing market crashed, and that all stopped. So, we pulled that back, started over, but even with that, we still have a relatively high growth rate compared to other parts of the state that are experiencing nothing.
It's probably more realistic in the next 10 years than 2 or 2.5.
Right. Especially with the interest in new construction. That's, I mean, it's constantly, you see new homes popping up.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Chris. Thank you for coming today. Chris will also, we also have in the audience, we have our Bike Pedestrian Traffic Committee is here, and Chris will be working with them at their first official meeting. And, you know, one of the things I'd just like to say and thank Chris and Simbo, we also have the Simbo team here, our widening of Highway 69 was accomplished because of Chris and their tenacity to stay with it, and the local contribution, $2 million that went into that project, $1 million for design, another million for construction. It's probably going to be about an 8 to 10 million dollars, just for that one-mile stretch from Prescott Lakes on Pass Frontier. And so, it's, but it's a definite needed, and so, thank you, Chris, for... This will probably be the last expansion dollars done in the state of Arizona for a while, until things change. So, I also want to commend on the distracted driving, because Simbo is the organization that took that forward, and we did six months last year. This year, we'll be doing a year of distracted driving. And Mayor, I volunteered you today to maybe do a commercial for him. Yeah. Yeah. So, it's been quite an impactful, we're gonna try to track those results a little bit more, and so, Simbo is, I've said this a million times, but as the liaison, it is the best example of regional cooperation, and if we could do more of that in this region, so, I just really commend you on what you've done. So, thank you for all.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you, Mayor. Chris, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for not directing all the negativity towards the city of Prescott, for the growth that's been taking place on a regional basis, things that this particular city council, or last particular city council, the one before, the one before, actually have no significant influence on. All we can respond to is what we as a council can take care of in the city limits of Prescott, not necessarily from here to Phoenix, you know? That's one of the issues that we have trouble with when, all of a sudden, we realize what portion of the traffic impact is actually related to the citizens and the taxpayers of the city of Prescott, and how much of the actual use of the roads that are coming in and going out of the city of Prescott are actually being caused by people that live someplace else and come here for a reason, and leave here for another reason. So, I appreciate those comments. I would probably suggest that as a region, is a better opportunity to get Washington's ear. It's a better opportunity to get people like, oh, I don't know, he likes talking about how he's Transportation Chair, or something like that, Representative Campbell's ear, because they like us working as a unit rather than as separately, but I've noticed a significant difference in the amount of money that our council spends on road issues to address amount of traffic that's actually being supplied by somebody else. So, I would make that suggestion to you, that you make some efforts towards talking through our representatives to talk through to Washington, and I think maybe, you know, I think President Trump wants to see infrastructure taken care of. I think President Trump wants to see the infrastructure taken care of in rural communities throughout the nation, not just Prescott, Arizona, but there are some opportunities to work on a federal level.
Right. And we do every angle that I can come up with to try to make it so that we can leverage these resources. I stay on top of that. So, I do appreciate, and especially, you know, comment, regionally, we do function very well as a region, and Councilman Lamerson, you're right on. If you look at the traffic patterns that happen in the region, you know, the majority of the employment is occurring in the city of Prescott Limits. That's just a fact. In the mornings, you can see it, if you go out and you stand on 89A and you look towards Prescott Valley, there's not as much traffic going east as there is west in the morning, and in the afternoon, it flips the other way. And it's, in the plan, based on what we saw from the results and the counting, is you're looking at about 65% or so, the traffic in the mornings, coming from Prescott Valley to Prescott, and then going back the other way. Chino Valley is even more, it's more like 80% is coming south out of Chino Valley, and then splitting up and going, you know, probably 2/3 Prescott and 1/3 Prescott Valley. So, the whole region interacts together and definitely is impacted in all kinds of ways, but working together is the only way we're gonna be able to effectively provide good transportation.
Very good. Councilman Sishka?
Thanks, Mayor. Appreciate that. You know, Chris, when you were on the radio with Billy and I this morning, we talked a little bit about Highway 17, and about alleviating the situation of shutdowns. So, could you kind of expand on that, just for everybody's edification?
So, currently, well, let's start back in 2015, the Simbo Board adopted a resolution to forward to ADOT, and we actually had some other MPOs and councils of governments jump in and do the same type of thing, encouraging ADOT to invest in Interstate 17, because it wasn't on any of the plans. It wasn't in the five-year construction program, and it just really wasn't on the radar because I think maybe it was just thought it was just too darn expensive, and we don't know what to do, and whatever. So, fast forward to today, Interstate 17 design is in fiscal year 19. Fiscal year '21 and '22, there's a total of $178 million that's programmed between the Maricopa Association of Governments and ADOT to look at improvements from Anthem all the way up to Cortez Junction. Now, the reality is, is $178 million doesn't really get you much. That's the sad part. The real fix to address all the concerns, capacity, alternate route, and everything, you're looking more in the $500 million range. So, to put that in perspective, that wipes out every single project in the ADOT plan for one whole year. No projects of any kind. So, we were instrumental in getting that moving, and right now, there is that 178, which would get you an additional lane coming from Anthem up to about Black Canyon City, and then from Black Canyon City getting up to at least Sunset Point. The condition, or the option right now, is to look at what would be a reversible lane. Now, it's physically separated, concrete barrier, gates on the end, controlled, can be opened and closed. It can be used in emergency situations to get people off of northbound that are stuck, that need to go north, or the other way around, or just simply on holiday times. Memorial Day, if you ask Alvin Stumpf, the district engineer, he'll tell you, there's 3,000 cars an hour going north on I-17. That's a lot of cars. I mean, I try to relate it to, if you had a big giant funnel, and you put your garden hose in it, and you put your finger over the end, and you fill up the funnel, and then you let your finger off, but you keep the hose going in there, that funnel doesn't empty very fast. That's what happens when a crash occurs on I-17. Even a minuscule one, a 5, 10, 15-minute delay can back up for miles, and this would give us an ability to move those people over and keep moving. And the biggest one, and I'll share this, Councilmember Mallory from Prescott Valley, she was working at Albertson's at the time, and this was about the time we passed the resolution, and she shared the, this is an economic impact, and it happens to all of our businesses. They had a crew that they brought in, 3 o'clock in the afternoon, getting a delivery truck. There was a crash on 17. It sat out there for hours, and they finally sent the crew home, and they had to bring them back at 3 o'clock in the morning. That's a cost to that business, not to mention if there's perishable items on that truck, you know, that you need to get out of that truck. This is important, and you've got trucking regulations that those drivers can only drive eight hours. So, some sort of improvement, if it's this reversible lane concept, it at least will get people moving. The estimate in the planning document that I saw for that, with that in place, would take an average delay from 320 minutes down to 80 minutes. 80 minutes is still a long time, but it's better than five hours. So, hopefully, we'll get at least that. The last part of it is, is ADOT has submitted a national grant, it's called an INFRA grant. I still don't know what the acronym's for.
You didn't know this morning?
I didn't know this morning, and I didn't bother looking it up, sir.
You can make it up.
But, it's through US Department of Transportation, and they're applying for another 300-plus million to be able to do all of those other improvements that I mentioned, additional capacity, maybe another alignment down through Bumblebee area, a truck-climbing lane, all kinds of things that would solve a lot of the issues that we're having out there. So, we, that was turned in in November. We haven't heard yet if that's been awarded, but it is a strong application.
So, what you're talking about is huge economic development opportunities for northern Arizona?
Yes.
Because people won't feel so restricted to possibly come up here during high times?
Yeah. I can imagine that there's people that just say, I'm not going on 17 on a holiday week and forget it. But, now, maybe they would.
Yeah.
Thanks, Chris.
Let's see, Mayor Pro Tim?
I just want to comment also, when you're talking about 89, and the roundabout there by the Pippin, I don't know if you've all driven out there lately, it's just going to be a great, beautiful entry into the city of Prescott, with the cowboy in a storm that's gonna be in the roundabout. I went by, it's gonna probably be about 14 feet on top of a pretty high mound, so it's gonna be an impressive entryway into Prescott. And they were doing a great job. I've had nothing but a lot of good reports from the Pippin people saying what a nice job they've done, so, just like to commend that project, too. It's good.
That's a good example of doing what we can with what resources we have, and I appreciate Councilman Sishka's question earlier on the connector just below 89A going east-west, that will help the traffic on 89A, and so, that's something we can do cooperating regionally with Prescott Valley. Any other questions or comments? Chris, thank you and your team for being here today. Really appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
And thank you to the Prescott area young professionals. Really appreciate you guys being here. You will hear from us, we will partner with you on social media, among other things. So, thank you so much. We'll be back at 3 o'clock. This meeting is adjourned.